Got it. Okay. Good morning. Hannah Dyer, Director of Fiscal Affairs, joining you to discuss Bill 8922 this morning. And I won't do introductions again since you already did them. But this bill makes supplementary appropriations to the capital budget for Board of Ed projects, which are all outlined in the fiscal note, so I won't go over those unless asked. But the Planning Advisory Board already voted to recommend approval of these, and so we ask for your support at the appropriate time. And we can take any questions you have. Thank you, Madam -- oh, so he used to say, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. On the security-related upgrades, are those the remaining vestibules? And I think the locking of the internal locking is done.
Good morning for the record. Matt Stansky, Acting Chief Operating Officer for the school district. Yeah, so they are security vestibules. This does not complete all of them, but it does continue to whittle down that list that we have. So yes, it's vestibules and locks.
Mr. Chair, can you talk about which schools this is going to address with vestibules?
Give us one second. Get that list for you.
So the particular schools this one addresses are Brooklyn Park Middle, Crofton Middle, Lyndale Middle, Oak Hill Elementary, Broadneck Elementary, Central Elementary, Botkin Elementary, and Severn Elementary. And most of those were actually completed this summer, so we forward-funded them, and this will help reimburse that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on 8922? Okay, thank you. It's easy. Next bill for discussion is Bill Number 9022, an ordinance concerning subdivision development adequate public school facilities. And I will turn it over to Mr. Barron, who was leading on this effort.
Good morning, Council. Team is staying the same at the table, except we're adding Mr. Stewart from the schools. 9022 approves the 2023 school utilization chart based on projected enrollment rates in the coming years. Our county code requires this bill to determine open or closed for development status for APF purposes of our school feeder systems. This is based on whether the schools are projected to reach a certain percentage of their state-rated capacities. Ninety-five percent for elementary, middle schools, 100% for high schools. Again, these charts are based on projections for future years. Over the past two years, and I'm sorry, Christine Duval has joined us at the table. Sorry, I forgot to introduce you. And she's joined the table because over the past few years, OPZ has led a school adequate public facilities work group consisting of county and school system professionals and members of the council. The work group has gathered data, reviewed our code, reviewed other jurisdictions' approaches, and met with experts. This council will hear from us over the next several months as the group is preparing its recommendations to reform many aspects of our county adequate public facilities law, including how this school chart is formed and issued. The administration recognizes that the chart before you can be made better, more timely, and more accurately project enrollments, that we must improve our code to make sure that this chart better informs county planning professionals, our school system, the development community, our communities, as well as parents and school kids. We continue to work, we will continue to work with the Office of Planning and Zoning and our partners at the Board of Education and members of this council to improve our APF process. I want to thank members of the council for the thoughtful discussions we have had in the past. And I know there are a number of questions and comments that we will engage in now, and we look forward to that discussion today. Thank you.
Ms. Pickard, I was ready for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a member of the long enduring school APF work group, I wanted to make sure we use this opportunity with this bill to start a conversation that is long overdue, in my opinion, in the county as to how we not only, the methodology we use to come up with school enrollment projections, but also when doing that, how we project out to the community what's happening with growth, with enrollment growth, and with our capital dollars to accommodate that growth. And of course, there's also, in relation to school APF, these policy decisions we make also influence other aspects like housing production. But for this bill, I think it's important to start this conversation and sort of peel back the curtain on how we get here to these numbers. I have shared with the council the questions, just so the school system is aware and the administration is aware, the questions that my colleague Ms. Hummer and I forwarded last week and the answers. Everyone received those yesterday. I want to be really clear with this. This is the beginning of a conversation, and those of us in the school APF work group, including those at the table, have lots and lots of data that has been analyzed, and we're on the brink of being able to use that analysis to create better policy. So this is just a little bit of a, of a little, this is the beginning, as Mr. Barron said. One of the things that struck me with this, these current projections, there's two things that have bothered me about the school chart. Is one, is we don't see, nor does the public see, actual enrollment data when looking at this chart. We see enrollment data plus projections. So the chart, by code, we use a document that the school system produces. So this is all in the code, but the code is a living document, as we know. So I think it's imperative that the public see, at some moment in time, actual enrollment numbers, and then a column with projections, which is easily done. But beyond that, the thing that struck me most about the projections presented here for 2024 are two things. This chart projects nearly 4,300 additional students enrolled in our schools by 2024. And if you look at year-over-year enrollment, we don't get anywhere close to that. Our biggest year enrollment growth was about 1,500. But it also leaves off, for conversation's sake and public policy's sake, it leaves off capacity that's being built and will be online by 2024. So it's putting out to the public, and for those of us who aren't, haven't been on the benefit of the school APF work group, it's not, it's not a complete picture of what's happening, both with our tax dollars and with our enrollment growth. We are funding a tremendous amount of additional school capacity with the new high school and a new elementary school, and capacity being added at a new middle school. Not a lot of capacity, but a little bit of capacity. But it doesn't indicate that anywhere on this chart. So if I were a parent looking at projections for my school, oh my goodness, it's quite alarming to see that the school system is adding 4,200 students or 300 additional students at my high school, but nothing's being done to alleviate it. The other interesting thing is, this, this document is, should set off alarm bells for other aspects of our, of our situation here, and that's teachers. But it doesn't, because the superintendent is not asking for additional teachers. But if we're really bringing on 4,200 students or anywhere close to that by the fall of 2024, we're, we're in a hole with teachers, bigger than the hole we already have. So the point of the questions that were laid out, we're meant to start a conversation. And that's before we get into any other policy decisions that these numbers, as the fiscal, final fiscal authority for our county tax dollars, we need to make sure that we're looking at growth and school capacity and our capital dollars, because we have competing needs with capacity and aging schools. So if we're going to continue to build new schools at the detriment of renovating older schools or adding additions to older schools, we need to understand that that's really where our tax dollars need to go. So I'll let, I'll stop my soapbox and let this conversation continue.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. I appreciate the comments. So I think a couple of things. Historically, the district, pre-pandemic, actually under-projected actual enrollments. So we went back and looked at our projections versus what was actually happening, and historically, we were undershooting the mark. Obviously, enrollment projections are a difficult thing to do, and I think with the pandemic, it exacerbated the difficulty of doing it. And so why you see such a large growth at the time when we made these projections and they were voted on, and as you said, in June of 2022, right, is we are anticipating our traditional growth, which is about 1,000 students a year, plus recovering those roughly, you know, 1,600 students that left the district during the pandemic. Do I think, do I know for sure that they're coming back? I don't. But we are anticipating that they will return at some point. And so I think that is why you saw, at the time, the projection that you saw. So, you know, we were seeing about 1,000 student a year growth before the pandemic. As I said, we lost about, you know, 1,600, 1,700 in 2020. That number remained relatively flat in 2021. And then in 2022, we did see an increase of roughly 1,300 students, right? And so the question is, in 2023 and 2024, you know, will we continue to see that 1,000 to 1,200, 1,300 student growth? Plus, will we see the students who left the district come back? And so it's an annual process that we go through. So at the time when we developed these projections back in, you know, January of '21, our anticipation was that these students would return by 2024. Obviously, we will now, having the benefit of actual enrollments for 2022, we will continue to update the projections. I think, you know, some of the issues you alluded to around the code, you know, we send the chart over to Planning and Zoning on, you know, in early June, right after the board votes on this, on this master plan. The master plan process is governed by, you know, state regulation. We update these, these numbers annually. And the code, you know, dictates what the county has to use in order to enforce this law. And so what, obviously, what we can commit to you is continuing to participate in the APF work group, and that we will continue to revise our projections based on actuals. But you don't see actuals in the chart, because we don't get certified actuals from the state until late November, which is essentially past the deadline of when we have to submit the data to Planning and Zoning to, to put the chart together. But we are certainly, the administration and the board is open to discussions with you, not only on the committee, but whatever the committee recommends. If there's potential law changes, we'll be obviously participants in that discussion, because ultimately, we, you know, I think we have the common goal of wanting to get the most accurate information to inform decisions around, you know, what areas of the county can be developed and which ones cannot.
Thank you. I understand the timeline and using the September '21 numbers to start the projection for the '24. But even the '21 numbers, actual count numbers, aren't listed in the chart. I think that even whether it's '22 or '21 numbers, it could be helpful. You know, just, just to show the snapshot in any time, we highlighted North County High School, which is key. We know North County High School is at, is over capacity by about 50 students currently, but you're projecting an additional 400 and something. At the same time, we've, we've built an entire high school that'll open in fall of '24 to alleviate the overcrowding at North County and Glen Burnie High School and Old Mill. So we're not, the public is not seeing, so this is, this is not a conversation. This is not an attack on the school systems. This is something we all have to work on, so that we're being more transparent and open about all the good work that's happening in this county. I mean, the public needs to understand that while North County High School could, could grow potentially to 2,900 students, if we weren't already building a school, we already had the forethought to build the school and fund the school. So we know we're going to be taking, at least I believe, we're going to be redistricting. That's on the school board to alleviate, that's the whole point of building, one of the whole points of building, the new, the additional high school. Now determining going forward if we need an additional, another additional high school in five, 10 years is a key component to this, because we also have schools that need to be renovated and modernized. Glen Burnie High School being one of them, and Annapolis High School being another. So we, we just have to, I, I just, my point of doing this today is to literally start a conversation. The methodology was not really outlined in, in the response to the questions we asked, because we know in 2019, the county school system and economic development funded a student yield generation study, which is really great bedtime reading, if anybody's into it, but it's a good, it's a good document to understand, because we know student yield generation, the majority of it's coming from existing sales of homes. And we know exactly where they're coming from based on that study. The other point was to look at what other communities are doing, like Howard County. That feasibility study they did this past summer is also, I think, a direction we need to move as a county, so that we can be more transparent with how we're spending county tax dollars and planning for future growth. Everything from land banking to their process of looking at enrollment growth and kicking it, before we start adding tax dollars to building schools, looking at area adjustments, redistricting, and then moving into a capital budget. It's just something we need to start, and I'm hopeful this council is eager to dive in with me and come up with a little more transparency, a little more sophisticated modeling, so we can all be better stewards of policy and, and tax dollars.
Yeah, Ms. Pickard, the only thing I'll say is, you know, our, our education facilities master plan has 10 years of prior data and 10 years of future-looking projections. We're happy to work with Planning and Zoning to include or exclude any data point from this document that you want in the open-close exhibit. And also willing to, you know, obviously, continue the discussions on enrollment projection methodology with you and the council.
Ms. Robyn?
Thank you. I have a number of questions, but I will start out with my biggest concern, which is Annapolis High School, which is completely within District 6. And it, you know, the chart shows it as anticipated projected enrollment for 2024, 116.9% utilization. I, I believe it's a little over 100 right now. Obviously, we're not to this 116.9% yet. But I guess my concern is when I looked, when I've looked at the, at least the very tentative plan for the redistricting, Annapolis High School is slated to be redistricted in, will be in Phase 2 of that redistricting plan. And so I'm curious what that means for, you know, is, again, you know, we've obviously talked about how accurate these numbers can be. What, what is it, you know, how, do we really know? Is it going to actually add, you know, close to 400 additional students by fall of '24? But, you know, if we're, if we're at least thinking that's a possibility, I'm concerned that it's in the second phase of the redistricting, and I'm wondering if there's anything that could alleviate my concerns. Will the Old Mill West High School pull? I mean, we're adjacent with that, with the current Old Mill feeder system. Is that possible, that it would pull students from the Annapolis cluster? So any, any response you have to that would be wonderful.
Thank you for the question. I think, obviously, I cannot comment on any proposals on redistricting or, you know, who's going into Old Mill West, because we don't even have draft proposals out in public yet, right? So team's still working on those options that will be released in February. The way the process works is, you know, the superintendent will release options, not a recommendation, but options to garner public feedback, which then will inform his recommendation to the board in July. And then, and then the board will obviously review those options, and, and the goal is to have a vote in November. Annapolis is not, you know, in, like, as you put, is in Phase 2 of our redistrict, current redistricting proposed timeline. And so in the meantime, we obviously have, currently have portable classrooms there to help alleviate the, the issues in that school. I think it's helpful to note that when we see the term utilization, we're using the current state-rated capacity number that the state IAC calculates every year. And that number does not include things like your cafeteria, your gymnasium, other common areas in the school. So I think it's important to note that. It's also important, like, if we have in an elementary school a triple E classroom, that actually is not counted in state-rated capacity, because the state doesn't recognize that as a class. And so that ultimately lowers the threshold. And so I think some of the discussion around APF will be centered around, is state-rated capacity the, the correct metric to use when looking at, you know, possible development? And as far as in, you know, mitigating the sort of the over 100% in the interim while we have, you know, Phase 1 and Phase 2 of redistricting, you know, the superintendent is committed to looking at additional operating budget resources and staffing and programming to also help mitigate the overcrowded situation at that school and other schools that are, that are over, you know, the 100%, but are not slated until Phase 2 for redistricting.
Thank you. And if, I have one follow-up, if I might. I also just wanted to, I don't know if others have made this observation, but a number of the high schools that are at the highest percent of utilization are among the students with high minority populations and high need populations. And I, I just find that concerning, and I want to express that concern and make sure I'm not the only one that is looking at this chart and seeing that.
Ms. Phyllis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to first say I appreciate and agree with a lot of what Councilwoman Pickard has said. I, I think when you have a school, and I handed out, or Madam Secretary handed out some information on Oak Hill Elementary, because that was one of focus in my first term. I heard from a significant amount of parents whose children were going to Oak Hill Elementary, and they were very frustrated with the fact that the school was not closed and were thrilled when it was. But when we look at the, the bill before us, I don't think that it reflects what parents are experiencing with their children's, children in the school. I do want to acknowledge you are doing what is required by code, and I think that there is clearly an overwhelming interest to update the code so that we are more transparent. But I did want to ask specifically about Oak Hill Elementary, understanding that these are projections only. We were at 100% capacity, 105, 111. And in this bill, the projection has drastically dropped. We've gone from over to under. Is there any idea what accounts for that difference?
What you have to look at is the different classes and grades. What happens a lot, you have a large class that moves in or out, and with that, it changes the total enrollment. And that's what's really important, and again, going back to Ms. Pickard's example of North County. You know, the, basically, if you look at that, the 11th and 12th grade are only about 400 students, but the incoming classes are 7, 800. So as those grades move through, I mean, you have a massive swing of those grades. Same thing in elementary school. We have kindergartners coming in. If there's a large class, basically, think of that, large class is going to continue through that whole school. And, and that's, that's really the biggest thing what we see, is when you have a small class graduating or a large class, it just totally, it changes it. Especially, most of these schools are sitting right at that 94, 95, and depending on where they are in that threshold. I mean, again, you look at the chart, there's a few schools open by a single seat or closed by a single seat. And, and the one thing, going back to your, the actuals, you know, keep in mind, this is a two-year projection. And when you start talking actuals, it does, it's going to confuse people, because people look at what they have today, but again, we're looking two years down the road, and you almost have to look at, well, what are the classes that are coming in? Whether it's 7th and 8th grade coming into a high school or that 4th and 5th moving up to a middle school. So it's, it's a very dynamic system that we deal with, and that's part of the reason we look at this every single year. And we basically make the adjustments, and under the current legislation, we basically provide the data to Planning and Zoning, and you guys create this chart.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I assume that that was the case, but just wanted it on the record.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, if, if you want detail, we can go back in historical enrollments. And we, you know, again, we have enrollments going back to the 60s on every single school. And, you know, a couple, you know, it seemed like a year ago I provided that to Planning and Zoning just to give them a lot of historical, there was a lot of questions that came up here in the APF, looking at some of our historical enrollments. And you'll see these kind of waves that go through the school system, and just, it's the nature of populations.
Thank you.
So I got a couple of questions, and any, for anyone that's, that's at the table. So in my current job, we have a readiness report that we do on a monthly basis, and it's, it's military, because I work on Fort Me, so on and so forth. And in that report, we actually have, like, authorized seats or bullets in this instance, and then a, a fill rate, which is, you know, who's actually occupying that. When I'm 30 minutes late dropping off my son, which happens quite often, believe it or not, I immediately get a text message saying that he wasn't, he was late for school, and most of you all probably get that same text message. So the system is capable of accurately reflecting attendance as well as enrollment in the school system. Is there any way, or do you capture, like, sort of, I know we do this annually, but is there a monthly enrollment within the school system that we can have access to, just to, to look at sort of trends? And so you, you talk about these wavelengths. The wavelengths happen from, from year to year. But if you look from month to month and look at actual enrollment, it may not be as sort of significant. So I'm just curious, from a data standpoint, is that something we could have access to?
Well, I'm sure we could provide it. We have something what's called gains and losses. And what we found is there's almost 7,000 students that are coming and going in a typical year. And that's a lot out of 84,000. So you could have people either transferring in, transferring out. And that data is available. Our student data section basically has that. We just would have to get it in some format that, that would be discernible to laymen.
And, and you had mentioned that in 2020, you lost how many students?
Well, actually, during COVID, we actually lost about 3,000, most of which were in elementary school.
And where did they go?
They went to private school, homeschool, people just, and I think of it this way. If you were, if your child, if you pulled your child out during COVID, you know, say if they were in 3rd or 4th grade, and you went to a private school, most likely, you're going to say, oh, um, when they went back to, say, public school, you may say, well, they're already been with these, these students, and you may leave them in there. And that's what we figured probably happened, either that or, or people stayed at homeschool.
But as a school system, you, you get numbers reported from private schools as well, no or no?
No.
Do you have any data on increases?
Yeah, so private schools report to the Maryland State Department of Education. They do not report to Anarona County.
Is there a way that you guys, you all can get, like, just to see that increase on the private, just to see, you said it shifted to private, but can you, can you say, show that in the data? That you saw an increase in private enrollment versus?
The problem we have is they won't give us addresses.
Well, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I'll just, just, if you got numbers.
Right. You know, again, we'd have to look at the state data. I know we have homeschool stuff, it's, but it's only if we're tracking their, their address, because you don't know where they're going to be assigned to. If they live in Severna Park and, you know, and they're going to a private school in Pasadena, you know, you need to know where their home base is and what their school would be. We can't get that from the private schools because of, you know, privacy issues.
I'm, I'm just curious if the, if the reduction in the school, you see that, like a seesaw, increase on the private side total, Anarona County total? If there's a way to just validate that to show from a system standpoint?
Yeah, we can certainly look at the MSD data and see if there is, we have to get access to it, but see if there's an, an increase in private school enrollment.
Simply because you said they went to the private sector or to private schools? Well, they got to go somewhere. So it'll be homeschool or private school or public school. Where they moved, right. But you would see the correlation on the private side of the house. Certainly, we can track the homeschool, because we keep that data, right? Right? And so the only, only, the only variable that we don't have is the, is the private one. So I'm curious to see if that, if that was true, that they went to private. Then we would know, at least, to, at least have another data element we can look at to say, okay, this really is what's anticipated potentially that could come. that could come back to the public school side of the house. Cause you said three thousand, uh, but we don't know if they all went to the private side of the house. Right.
All I know is they.
It could be five hundred. And then we're anticipating another twenty-five hundred from the private side and they don't exist over there because we didn't see an increase in the private school enrollment number.
All I know is they.
They went somewhere.
They left.
Except pub, uh, a homeschool, which we do keep a.
We do.
Date on. And you saw homeschool increase.
Significantly.
Was it in a vein, the range of three thousand?
No, no. I mean, it was like, I mean, probably doubled to maybe a thousand, like total.
And even if you look at our projections, actually our new ones, we actually now include the virtual academy, which was, I think, five hundred and sixty-two students. So we are tracking that. And so they didn't go back into a school per se, they went to, well, our virtual academy.
Right. But they're still in the total.
They're in the.
A capacity.
On the total of the spreadsheet that was provided, not all the data was there.
How, and how, what was the increase on that one? On the virtual?
Virtual was, it's still, I think, around five, five, well, actually it was, I think, five sixty-two. We looked at it, it looked like it dropped down about five forty, something like that during the year. So.
Check.
And some of those either returned back into their homeschool.
So about fifteen hundreds to two thousand is what we're, got a question mark on, ish.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank, oh, Julie. Nope. All right. I just want to add something on the private school side is many people that go to private school do not go within the county or people come from outside of the county. So even if we got the private schools in the county, it wouldn't necessarily reflect our public school enrollment because we can't tell where they're coming from. If they came from Prince George's County or if our kids are going to a private school in Prince George's or Howard or something. So it's, you know, I think we'd see an increase in private school, but it would be hard to track where they were coming from. But as Ms. Pickard brought up, I, I really think it's crucial that somewhere on this chart that we put the projected, um, that, the new construction that we have coming through. It's, this chart is so important for us from a development standpoint, but also speaking as a parent. Parents don't understand all the nuances of that. They just see that percentage that says my school is going to be a hundred and seventeen percent. And that freaks parents out. They start to think, do I want to send my child to private school or do we need to move or something like that? So the best information, the most complete information we can give to parents, the better. Um, in my district, Piney Orchard Elementary, for instance, is, on the chart says in twenty twenty-four, it's going to be a hundred and seventy-four percent capacity. We know it's not going to be because there's a new elementary school being built right there. That school is, and a large portion of those students are going to be pulled from Piney Orchard. But if you were a parent and, and just saw that number, I hear from them. They get very, you know, they're concerned. We need to have somewhere on that chart that lets people know, not necessarily that their children will be moved because we don't know until redistricting occurs. But that those schools in added capacity are in the pipeline and will have a major impact on this whole chart. I mean, the Old Mill High School is going to have a huge impact on any number of schools on this chart and really change things in twenty twenty-four. So I, if, whether it's an added column or a disclaimer somewhere on the paper, but something that will just give that is a better indication for people for what's coming. Because that's one of the great things we're doing in this county with the school system and the county working together is expanding and building new buildings. So let's make sure we're getting that information out so that everyone has, um, the most accurate things as they plan forward.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you. Just to follow up on some of the comments or the, the things already said. So, uh, Ms. Fiedler, so Oak Hill as of September thirty is at six hundred and fourteen enrollment, which is at eighty-nine percent. So projecting by twenty twenty-four, it's going to grow to six thirty-seven, making it about ninety-three percent. So that's one of the missing numbers. Um, we know the count, the, the students in the seats as of September thirty of this year, it's, um, at eighty-nine percent. Um, you never actually see that anywhere written down, but, um, it's, it's, that's, that's that. So, and, and Lisa, uh, Ms. Raviyan, with, um, Annapolis High School, the question I have, rather than, I mean, redistricting is certainly, um, and, and modernization and additions is, is a part of this conversation. But the question, the, what I'm trying to understand better is how do we, how do, what's the methodology that goes into projecting an additional three hundred students? Um, that's what I think we need to, we need to get more sophisticated on, um, moving forward. And, and I believe there's agreement, at least from the work group. I think there's agreement that, um, we don't necessarily have, uh, as sophisticated a methodology as we could, both on the county side or the school system side. And it, it's the perfect time to re- to visit this conversation, one with the redistricting happening, um, the school APF work group and budget season. If we don't have the expertise in-house to work on the methodology, we should be looking as a county to figure out where we can get it. Um, either, either, um, contracting it out or, um, bringing it in-house, um, either on the, the county side or the school system side. Our constituents, uh, I think especially after going through a four-year countywide redistricting, are going to demand more transparency and better data. And we as a council should certainly be demanding, uh, better analysis so that we can be good fiscal stewards of our tax dollars. Um, and also, um, address, um, other aspects that this, the, this data, um, impacts, which is housing production. It, it's, it's imperative. We're, we're not like any other district. We are right there in the mix with, across the country with a, a massive affordable housing crisis. And those are those competing needs that we were elected to tackle on this council. Um, the school board gets to redistrict and we get to think about a few other things. So I hope we can work together. Um, I'm going to keep asking questions. Um, and I hope the conversation will, will continue. I fully expect the school chart, uh, to pass. It's what's in the code. We don't have time to, to totally alter the code right now. But I think, um, that will be coming to, to, but it's not as simple as even the conversation we've had thus far to figure out exactly how to revise the code, to look at this first step, which is the school utilization chart, uh, as it then informs school APF. So we have a lot of work to do, but I'm hoping to have a nice collaborative exchange, um, and get it done. Oh, last thing. We don't know where the three thousand students went exactly. We know they might've gone to virtual or they might've gone to, they might be homeschooled. We do, we do know that. But we do know when they return, if they have, if they are re-enrolling. We do know that, right? That, that this is a returning student who left in twenty twenty and is now back in twenty twenty-three. So that is interesting data, a data point that we could be looking at. We do, we should be able to have that. Yes. I don't think.
And, and when they. Real quick before I switch to Ms. Ledbetter, um, the, if someone is disenrolled, um, and, you know, they choose to go to a private school, don't they request records or a transfer or something like that? So, so don't we know where they went?
That's part of the gains and losses.
Yeah. So we, so we do know where they went.
Yeah, we know exactly. Actually, we have data. Did they go to a different school? Did they go to a different district? Did they do it in the country?
Exactly.
Or did they come from a different country? We have all that data, exactly where they, where they went, where they came from.
So we should know where, where the private side, if, if they're in the private within the county. Um, okay. Uh, Ms. I mean, the, the reason we're so sort of, uh, into this is, is such a significant impact. This is like one cog in the wheel of governing, right? Uh, so this, this sheet doesn't just infect the school system, it impacts, uh, a whole host of other things within the county. And so that's why this, you know, the, those are up, that are up here are so, uh, inquiring about it because we want to make the best decision possible. But we can only do that when we have the best data possible. And so, uh, that's all. Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you. My question is specific to, um, these reading glasses. I'm getting used to looking down and looking up at the same time. Uh, aging is painful. Um, I'm looking specifically at Crofton High School. It's really the only school within District Seven that is, I would say significantly over a hundred percent. I also have Tracy's Landing. Um, but Crofton High School in particular, at that projection at a hundred and nine point five percent. Currently there's no portables at the high school. For the sake of the families and the parents who are looking at, you know, having their children attend there in the coming years, would you be able to speak to along the lines of Annapolis, you know, any measures that the school system is, that's on the table to help handle that increasing, um, student body size? I know in Crofton in particular, a lot of the student growth has to do with resale of existing homes. So this isn't development necessarily, you know, that we can control. We can't put our hand on that lever. It's private choice. Um, so if you could speak to that, that would be very informative for the folks at home.
Sure. I think, um, thank you for the question, uh, Councilwoman Ledbetter. So obviously with Crofton, it's a new school, right? And so that is very attractive to families to move into that community. Um, it obviously is already over capacity. We are possibly looking at portables to help alleviate that issue. And then obviously that, the Crofton feeder is also in phase two of redistricting, which won't begin until twenty twenty-five. So again, I'll reiterate that those schools that are experiencing overutilization, you know, the superintendent's committed to looking to get additional operating dollars in there to help alleviate, uh, you know, the, the, the situation as best we can. But, you know, uh, outside of, you know, putting, possibly putting portables there, we're going to face an overutilization situation there for a couple of years.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yep.
So you two have, uh, questions as well?
I think you were ahead of me.
Thank you. Um, so I appreciate the follow-up from Ms. Pickard. That's, her points are what I was trying to illustrate with the handout, that if I'm a parent of a child at Oak Hill Elementary School and I have one that's in third and one that's in fifth, I, I don't know by looking at this chart what the actual enrollment is. Understanding that you're doing what is required by law and, and it is not required of you to list actuals right now. Um, but that is, that was basically my whole point. And I think even though we're projecting out two years from now to, you know, people reading these pieces of legislation at home. And when I go to Severna Park meetings, they just remember that three years ago, we, we closed the school and now we're opening it. Um, so I have to be able to explain that. Um, and we don't have the, the documentation to really do that from a, a bill sharing, uh, piece. Yes, we do have that, but that is a lot to, to lug around.
It's really hard to take this five hundred and twenty-page document and put it into a simple little five-page document.
Agreed.
And that's the thing. I think from, uh, the parents, I think somehow what you need to do is direct them back is what this book asks every single school. And it shows all the different grades and it shows the actuals. It shows what they're projecting. And I think this is very helpful to show, you know, the different class sizes because I think it is hard to do that for the fifth grade. But if you did, you know that, hey, the fifth grade is a large class or a small class.
Yep.
And as they move in, so I think this is just, uh, footnotes and it just doesn't get into a lot of detail.
And I think that that's what we're all talking about. Yeah.
Unless you want to have your chart just large, um, which is a little over the top. And that's why you have to publish this every year, provide that level of detail.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I'm going to, if I may dovetail into my, um, question. When you talk about fluctuating class sizes, um, we don't, other than enrollment in private, um, pre-K and, and preschools, or maybe we do, have any idea of incoming kindergarten classes because we could potentially have a very large class size that was not anticipated, which then.
Yeah, that, by far, that is our hardest job we have.
Okay.
All we have is the birth records. And the state provides that to us every year. So we know how many, you know, children who were born, basically saying yes and no. I know a lot of children that are born. So we basically have a snapshot time that we would forecast based on those number of birth rates. You would see how many actually enter, like you go back five years, you would see who was born. And then you look at how many of the kindergarteners you can have. And that's, that's about the best judge we have for that. Um, and again, it's somewhat science, somewhat art. Um, you know, because what happens a lot of times, you'll have children or parents, I mean, like, yeah, one of my kids were small. One of them went to private kindergarten. So you have that mix of, of, of people because of daycare reasons, maybe they chose to go to a private, uh, daycare and they needed, and they had the kindergarten. And then all of a sudden, first grade will have that increase where, you know, sometimes it's easy where just the, the grade succession where, you know, you have a kindergarten and that moves to first grade next year. So in that beginning, we constantly are dealing with fluctuations in that. And, um, it's one of those things. Same thing, uh, uh, again, as you get in the larger grades, um, I get, when we looked at the North County High School, for example. You know, we found that it ranged every year, I mean, you could have two, two middle schools, eighth grade's moving up. And you can say, okay, there's going to be seven hundred, say, moving up from that eighth grade from that. But then we'll find out that, oh, wait a minute, we have forty-five to a hundred and nine on average that are coming from private school that were in either charter schools or in private school in, in eighth grade that we have to absorb. And then on top of that, especially high school, you have STEM programs. And you have, I think it was two hundred and eighty-seven students coming from outside the feeder, only ninety-one in the feeder. And that's a lottery-based. So there's, there's a lot of assumptions that are being made. And, uh, you know, again, when our projections come in pretty tight, I, I think we're off by, you know, a few hundred. You know, overall, I think that's pretty good when you start talking eighty, eighty thousand students. So, you know, we do the best we can with the information we have.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mrs. Ravi, Raviyan?
Thank you. Um, I, I actually, a couple of my colleagues are, covered the points that I was, you know, intending to make or just intending to ask about, um, as I was writing my notes on them. So I actually want to say thank you to Ms. Hammer for mentioning the perception issue. Again, with respect to Annapolis High School and the projection of a hundred and sixteen point nine and the current, you know, the incurrent enrollment, um, just really adds to, um, right now, the city of Annapolis is having a conversation about how we can increase affordable housing and how we can increase the housing stock in general. And that makes it very difficult, um, you know, if, if these numbers really are maybe not accurate or, you know, there are, there are, um, release valves that might be available to us that we're not seeing in the numbers. Um, it makes it really difficult to have, you know, genuine conversations about affordable housing because there's also, you know, the, the very reasonable mindset that if the high school is over capacity, we shouldn't be developing anything. But at the same time, um, the, good luck finding an apartment under two thousand dollars a month in this, anywhere in Annapolis. Um, so I, I just really want to put that out there because that, those things are in very strong conflict right now in Annapolis. And I'm concerned about, um, and if, just again, expressing my concern that waiting until, um, you know, twenty twenty-five for any sort of release valve, um, the school, I mean, yes, I guess additions and additional portables, but we, we've already done both of those at Annapolis High School. And it's a big school. So, um, I guess that's just my advocacy and say, hey, we, we got to look at, I, I hope we can look at options sooner.
So I just, uh, for the record, I want to clarify something because I don't think everyone knows this. When you calculate state rated capacity, that does not include portables. That is just the physical building. So, um, I know from my days on the Board of Ed that state rated capacity was always a baffling puzzle to me because it seemed to, you know, vary, uh, and it can really change. For instance, if we add a portable and we put music out in the portable, we've just freed up a classroom and raised the capacity of the building when it's still serving the same way, correct?
So we have to subtract to see a whole classroom. If, if you move a program out of the school into a portable, we would actually subtract it.
So you wouldn't be able to count that room as now a classroom that could hold thirty kids?
Correct. Because I've taken away something that was a classroom. If it's a, if, if it's a approved program, I would have to subtract it.
Oh, so music would be a approved program, but you said like triple E is not.
That's not.
So if we had triple E out in a portable, that could free up another.
Yeah. And even you have to understand with high schools, again, the Annapolis example, there's eight portables. That's eight times, uh, twenty, basically twenty, well, twenty-one point two-five. So it's roughly a hundred and sixty extra seats.
Right.
Out in the portables, that is not in the state rating capacity. Um, the other thing you have to understand about high schools, we, we downrate them. So it's basically eighty-five percent of capacity. Because think of it, not everybody takes French three or, or, or Spanish two. So the, the class sizes might not be that twenty-five in a class. It may only be fifteen. So we basically make an eighty-five percent in the high school level reduction.
Oh, interesting.
Technically, there are seats sort of built in fifteen percent. So when high schools hit a hundred percent, it gets into sometimes a scheduling exercise to basically make those adjustments.
And many, if not most of our high schools do have portables.
I would say, yeah.
Yes. So there are, there is some additional there. Not that we want that all of our students to be housed in portables. That's not the ideal. But, um, it, it is having had children that went to schools that all had portables and did their, it does help, um, alleviate and, and spread things around. And so the state rate of capacity can sometimes be a little.
and spread things around. And so the state-rated capacity can sometimes be a little misleading for people, as to how much classroom space there actually is for students, if we don't include portable space in there. But, but we still don't want to be overburdening our schools. It would be fabulous if none of our kids were out in portables, but that's a long way off.
Well, we're hoping with redistricting, we can try to start solving some of those problems.
Right. And, and that number has reduced over the years. I know that we've been making progress toward moving away from the portables, but to have that. But I just, to make clear to everyone, because many people don't realize that the portables are not included in the capacity of a building. So they actually do help alleviate the, the crowding.
Yeah. Again, most of the portables that we added over the years is when we went to all-day K, and we basically had to add, I mean, at one time back in 2006, we were adding like 30 portables in summer, trying to basically make up those classrooms. Because again, it went from half-day, all of a sudden you needed two classrooms instead of one. So, and then we spent many years from basically 2006 until recently to basically do these K additions, where we added a lot of capacity to our whole system, and we were able to get state funding, even if a school didn't need capacity. We ended up getting, so now we have excess seats, and as everybody knows, we have over 10,000 seats. They're not all in the right spot, but we do have a lot of seats.
Thank you.
Mr., oh.
Just one last thing. And I do appreciate your response about state-rated capacity. We had asked specifically, you know, just to understand some of the programmatic changes that changed that. So thank you all for that.
I think I saw Ms. Picker.
I just, I wanted to ask if I could jump in, because one of my comment was specifically about portables. I actually believe the state is 100% right not counting portables in the state-rated capacity. As a teacher who's taught in a portable and, you know, have many students who take classes in them and hear about them, sometimes they work okay, and sometimes they're, you know, completely not conducive to learning. So, I mean, you know, obviously, situations can vary. I, I think the state is 100% correct to not include. We should absolutely be aiming to have students inside buildings, you know, especially, I, I recall the, the situation at Tyler Heights Elementary School, where, you know, they had an enormous number of portables. I think they were up to 15?
Fourteen.
Fourteen at one point. And, you know, you have little kids walking, you know, picture the, the coldest part of the winter, walking, you know, out in the cold to some bathroom that's far, far away.
And we had a bathroom unit, too.
Yes, but it's not in the, it's not in their portable.
Right.
And not necessarily desirable. And I, I just, I think the state is 100% right on. We should absolutely be aiming to get all students and teachers out of portables. And I just want to, you know, I think that that is a fair way to calculate state-rated capacity.
Ms. Picker?
Thank you. This is exactly the conversation that I wanted to start today, and I'm really grateful for my colleagues to taking part. The, I obviously have several points to make, but better data, we needed better data when we allowed as both a school board and a council to build Crofton High School too small. And that is a very costly endeavor that was led by more of a political narrative than it was by actual true need in the county. So I really don't want that to happen again. And I'm ever so grateful that the new high school is being built at 2,100 seats plus, because we are a growing county, even though ever so less than 1% a year, we're a growing county. So that's another reason why we need to be having this conversation. But I do want to emphasize, I still don't have, and there wasn't ever an answer to the methodology. So if we could send you guys back to your office and take a minute to actually show us the math on how we get either 300 additional students by 2024 at Annapolis, how you came to that number would be really helpful. Or how you come to that number at North County, or Maryland City, which we know, I know Greg what you're going to say, so just slow your roll. Watershed is coming, and 1,800 new housing units are being built, but they're not being built by 2024. They're being built in 100-unit increments over the next 10 years. So we need to tell the story better so that we can make better policy and better fiscal decisions, both as a school board and as a county council and, and administration.
If I could, just on, on build out, just because my favorite is Two Rivers. And I know you hate that subdivision.
I don't hate it. We, we're leaving it by building a school.
Right, but...
And some of these, some of the housing that's been built have been mitigated by adding full additions to meet high schools. So we can't ignore the, the information that the public is getting is only telling one little part of the story, and they don't, it doesn't, and anywhere tell the rest of the story.
Right. But let me, let me just talk build rate, because again, Two Rivers, and I can tell you just talking to even the developers, we, we all assumed it would be a 10-year build out. Now COVID hit, and you thought, okay, sales dropped off. Next thing you know, they've settled 65% of the homes in two years. We have over 300 students coming out of, out of Two Rivers. The yield factor is .5. The Arundel Elementary School yield factor is .25. So it's double the yield factor, just in that 635 homes that were settled. Again, I get, I try to get quarterly reports from the developer on that. No one expected to sell that many homes that fast. And that's probably, that's one of the biggest reasons Piney Orchard is so blown out of the water. Again, we never envisioned that meant that much sales pace there. And again, they were selling just single families. I think they had six different builders and different price points, and it's, it was one of those developments. You know, we're dealing with some of those large ones in different areas, Cedar Hillup and Mr. Smith's areas. They were selling, you know, a lot of row, you know, it seemed like weekly rows were going. I mean, they, they had a nice price point, they'd been selling a lot. And part of the APF, I mean, they were vested back 15 years ago, and they're still allowed to build. So I mean, there's a lot of issues with APF that we have to address, and I know we've had at least two years of conversation, not much progress, but two years of conversation. And I, hopefully, we can make some better progress on that. And I look forward to it.
Ms., Ms. LeBert?
Thank you. I just had one quick, I just want to make sure, I want to clarify my understanding when it comes to the virtual school and some of the assumptions that were made. And I, I do understand that you can't look into a parent's mind and predict what decision they're going to make as far as enrollment for their child, you know, one year from now, much less two. But we, when you looked at that approximately 4,000 student increase that's in your projections, and a certain percentage of those are the students coming back from being enrolled in different schools. Knowing that the virtual school is actually a different school, it's not part of that AACPS brick and mortar program, are those 562, 42 students in the virtual school part of that assumption of who might be coming back? Does my, is my question making sense? Or, or do you know that they're going to stay? Or do we assume that they're staying in virtual school?
We're assuming they're going to stay in virtual at this time. We just basically flatlined the five, I think 562 in the projections, because I have no better information. I mean, we do the same thing with some of our special schools. As we get enrollments, we basically hold that at, you know, if you look at our projections, it'll just be flatlined out at that number.
Okay.
And that's the best thing. Until the funding doesn't occur.
Right.
We're going to carry that number.
Perfect. So that, that group of students who we make a projection may be coming back, that is homeschool, private schools, those would be the main categories?
Or it could be birth rates. I mean, again...
Birth rates, yeah.
Again. That's what the, there's a lot of data.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
Seen any other lights up here? So thank you for this intriguing conversation. I do, I made a mental note that I should have been a Realtor a couple of years ago from, apparently from the sales, sales piece. So thank you all for this information. All right. The next bill up for discussion is Bill 9122, an ordinance concerning special community benefits district. And Mr. Hunt, I think you are leading the, the show on this one. And for the record, we also have Lori Klosmeyer who's also here from the Office of Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ethan Hunt from the Office of Law, representing the administration. With me at the table is Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. Bill 9122 obligates the county to levy a special community benefit assessment against the Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District to repay a million-dollar loan from First Citizen Bank to the Sherwood Forest Club to improve a tennis club and tennis court and clubhouse. The loan has an 11-year term and any costs the county incurs through administering its payment will be recovered through the administrative fee collected at the time of taxation. The loan is not backed by the full faith and credit of the county, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
I guess Ms. Fiedler, that's your district, right? Severna, who has Severna Park? Oh, is that yours?
Sherwood Forest.
Is that yours?
No.
Oh, it is. Oh, okay. I see Severna Park, and then I think, I think District Five. Any, any concerns or questions in reference to that? Okay. No questions here? That concludes the conversation on Bill 9122. Next up for discussion is Bill 9222, Critical Area Overlay. Mr. Hunt, you're, you're driving the show on this one as well, and then Ms. Miller?
Yep. I'm just going to wait for a second for our folks from OPZ to come up to the table.
And this bill is, is submitted by Ms. Fiedler and Ms. Picker? Did you want to, any comments in reference to it?
Sure. This is a cleanup bill, if you will, to 5722. We added an amendment to that bill that basically was a contingency for the RCA portion of the bill. The Critical Area Commission did send a recommendation letter, and this bill reflects what was in that recommendation.
Ethan Hunt from the Office of Law. With me at the table is Lynn Miller from OPZ and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. As the sponsor mentioned, this bill just makes changes that were requested by the Critical Area Commission to allow Bill 5722 to fully go into effect. So we're here to answer any questions, but we have no opposition to this bill.
Don't see any questions. Okay. That was easy. I guess we'll move on to Bill Number 9322, ordinance concerning Board of Appeals. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. If, Mr. Chairman, if you have some...
Ms. Dina? Yes, please come forward.
Thank you. So this bill is actually, after four years of getting letters and emails from constituents who were confused by the language on the process to apply for a Board of Appeals case, the very first request was to list Council Manic District, which then folks were going onto county council pages, which links them to our pages. And on occasion, we were getting, or at least the Fifth District Office was getting pulled in, and we had to be very clear that the council is very separate from the Board of Appeals. So this just updates the language to reflect what is the, the true policy.
Any questions?
I just, if I, if I may, Ms. Bussie, we had discussed this prior to the introduction. This doesn't have any negative impact for the Board of Appeals in the process, does it?
Dina Bussie, Board of Appeals. No, the bill looks good to me.
Thank you.
Any, any other notes?
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Ethan Hunt from the Office of Law, this is a policy choice of the council, and the administration has no opposition.
I just had, I just had one question. We're striking, I just want to clarify, we're striking the Council Manic District and adding the actual address?
That is correct.
Is there any reason we couldn't have both?
Well, the Council Manic District, we could have both, I believe, but that's...
I just don't know all my streets.
Well, I, I believe, I mean, I did not ask for historical on this section of the code to be pulled, but I would imagine at some point in time, it wasn't as easy to figure out if application was in your area. But now you can, as a resident, see an address on an application that's before the public or before the Board of Appeals, plug it in and say, oh, that is, that is in Severna Park, or that is in Glen Burnie. I think keeping the district on, on the format leaves that confusion still, that they can somehow, residents can somehow reach out to individual council members for support of their case. And that is where the problem is. And I just want to thank Ms. Bussie. I know you have been here from the very beginning, so thank you for taking the time.
Makes sense. Any other questions from council members? Okay. Well, thank you. All right. Next piece of legislation is Bill Number 123, Urgency Ordinance. And I see we have Mr. Barron up as well.
We also have Ms. Miller from OPZ joining Mr. Hunt and Ms. Blair Klosmeyer for us. 123 further amends the sunset date of Bill 5521, which extended the temporary use authorization of outdoor seating at restaurants. The new proposed sunset is January 2, 2024. Throughout the pandemic, as you all know, outdoor dining provided a lifeline to restaurants, allowing them to remain open and serve our residents, provided some flexibility as we were dealing, and as we are dealing with COVID-19. Many of these restaurants have made significant investments to expand outdoor seating. Through the continuation of these relaxed regulations, we hope to protect these investments, and especially as the warmer months are hopefully coming soon. This is an emergency ordinance, which will take effect immediately. We have our team here to discuss any questions you may have. It is, our, our code, learning lessons from the pandemic and the flexibility that we provided to our restaurants, is something that we should consider making permanent. Over the coming year, we will be discussing with you guys, with our planning professionals, with our restaurants, about what changes can and should be made permanent. But in the meantime, the current status quo is working well, and we should let our restaurants continue as we make it, as we review the code and make this, make proposals to make this permanent.
And I'm, and I'm grateful for that, because I know you and I spoke about this, about the, the long-term process. And obviously, this is just a temporary or bend date that's been on for the last three years, I think. And it, it does seem like a capability and a resource that would allow restaurants to continue to flourish, and we want them to sort of have every leg up. But any questions from the council members on this piece? Ms. Ravi?
I'm totally in support of this, and I like the idea of long-term. I was just curious if you've had any pushback, if there's any party that has expressed concern about this, you know, even being extended temporarily or long-term?
So it, it, I'll, I'll let folks add anything, but I am aware, especially when we were first setting these up, how they were arranged, handicap accessibility, making sure that continued. You do sometimes take a parking spot or a piece of the sidewalk, and making sure that the restaurants could work with our, our regulators to, to make it work. That was in 2020 that we heard complaints. I can't think of a complaint that I, that has come across my desk recently.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
Last piece is we dig, deep into this one for the long-term solution. Any liquor board sort of issues that are impacted by this or could be impacted by this?
I'll, I'll turn to the better lawyers at the table, but I, I believe there is no issue unless we were to add seats that would take them outside of their license, and that we have not permitted.
Okay. All right.
I love it when the better lawyer is nod.
All right. If there are no more questions, that concludes this particular piece of legislation, conversation. Next legislation, Bill Number 223, surplus property disposition. And so Mr., Mr. Hunt, you are driving the, the train on this one.
Yep. Ethan Hunt from the Office of Law, representing the administration. At the table with me is Chris Daniels from Office of Central Services, and Christine Nederer from the Office of Law. This bill is a follow-up to Resolution 1122, which approved the surplus designation of a .058-acre county-owned property located on the north side of Overly Drive in Severna Park. The county surplus process is a multi-step process. Resolution 1122 declared the property surplus, and the bill before you today moves forward with the disposition process. If anyone is unfamiliar with the property, it's a portion of a larger lot on which a house is currently being built. The house being built... Uh, the house being built is significantly encroaching on the county right-of-way and a stop work order has been put in place. Um, upon a title review, it was revealed that both the county and the private party have competing ownership claims to this parcel. And so this bill, along with the resolution or steps to resolve the cloud on the title by conveying the portion of the parcel to whatever extent the county does have an ownership claim to the private party. Uh, as part of the agreement of sale for the county stake in the property, final conveyance of the county-owned portion is contingent upon the developer removing any portion of the structure encroaching on the county right-of-way. Um, we've been working with the developer and are preparing an amendment at their request to revi- to revise the agreement of sale to push the settlement date back uh, so that they may have more time to complete the required renovations. Part of the agreement, um, so we're happy to answer any questions the council has.
And this parcel is in District Five this time. Okay, good.
You got it.
Any concerns, uh?
Um, just for clarification sake, it's only, the agreement was to remove the portion. So there is no agreement that they have to remove the entire house. I ju- just for the general public because I know that question is coming.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, uh, from, from here? So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other, uh, uh, business that needs to be brought up, uh, for this meeting? Okay, well, uh, thank you everyone for being here today and this council is adjourned until seven PM on Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.